Watch pod.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the October twenty seventh meeting of the governing body to order. Madam clerk, would you take the role?
Dr. Aldrich.
Present.
Mayor Collins.
Present.
Dr. Emmons.
Present.
Mr. Escabel.
Here.
Mr. Labor.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Present.
Dr. Rennie.
Present.
Mr. Seagrave.
Present.
Mr. White.
Present.
All members are present. We do have a quorum.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda. All agenda items listed with the designation of C A are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
Right. Are there any items a member of the governing body would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Aldrich.
Number eleven, please.
Concur.
Number eleven has been removed? Any others?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Labor.
Number fourteen A.
Concur.
Concur.
And number fifteen A.
Concur.
Concur.
Anybody else? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
移步 by Mr. Seagrave. Seconded by Mr. White. All those in favor of the two items left, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The consent agenda is approved with items eleven, fourteen A, and fifteen A removed. They'll be considered their normal sequence on the agenda.
Six A, public hearing for a bar and grill liquor license application filed with the city clerk's office for Red Bones LLC, doing business as Ham Bones Pizza, four fifteen West Seventeenth Street, Suites one seventy and one eighty.
All right, we'll open a public hearing. Is there anybody from the applicant here tonight? Did you want to speak? You don't have to. All right. Anybody else here that wants to speak to this request for a bar and grill liquor license? About from the governing body?
I do have a question.
Dr. Rennie.
I was hoping the applicant could tell us, I assume we currently have a restaurant license. And I was hoping they could tell us how the operation of their business would change if they had a barns bill license as opposed to how it's currently operated with the rest.
If you guys could come forward and just answer that question for us, please. Would you identify yourself for the record, sir?
Jason Hammer.
Jason, welcome.
Thank you. The only really thing that's going to change is we only have seating for about eight, six, eight people over there, and then we're going to add seating for another fifty-one next door and then add alcohol and TVs so that people have a place to come in and sit down and watch games and eat pizza.
Sir, will you have a bar as part of that?
Yeah, there will be a, there will be a bar in there as well, just so that I, because otherwise I would, with the other license, I would have to serve behind, and it's kind of an open space, so I'm going to put a bar in as well.
Dr. Rennie. Anybody else who want to talk to the applicant? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the governing body? Hearing none, the purpose of the public hearing has been met, and we'll assign this item to the finance committee.
Number seven ordinance, third reading, amending section two point two point eight, assigned zoning of the Cheyenne Unified Development Code to conform with the comprehensive revision of Laramie County zoning regulations.
All right, currently, we assign a zone district to newly annexed properties that's closest to the current county zone, but recently the county changed their zone districts and ours no longer match one-to-one. So this ordinance outlines our new procedures to assign a zone change to newly annexed properties. Is there anybody that would like to speak to that? Please come forward. Hearing none, Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. White. Comments from members of the governing body. Madam clerk, would you take the vote?
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Dr. Emmons.
Yes.
Mr. Escabel.
Aye.
Mr. Labor.
Aye.
Mr. Moody. Dr. Rennie.
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
This ordinance is approved on third and final reading.
Number eight ordinance, third reading, amending section eight point six zero point zero five zero weeds as a nuisance of the municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, to revise and clarify provisions and specify conditions under which vegetation does not constitute a nuisance.
This ordinance helps us with the recognition that our current vegetation rules not, not be our best practices. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to this ordinance on third reading? Hearing none, Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Emmons. Comments from the members of the governing body. Hearing none, madam clerk, would you take the vote?
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Dr. Emmons.
Yes.
Mr. Escabel.
Aye.
Mr. Labor.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Dr. Rennie.
Yes.
This ordinance is also approved on third and final reading.
Number nine ordinance, third reading, amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from P public and M U B mixed-use business emphasis to C B D Central Business District for land located between O'Neil Avenue and Cary Avenue, north of West Nineteenth Street and south of West Twenty-Second Street.
All right, this is an effort by the city to rezone the municipal complex and some adjacent properties to better fit our current and future uses. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to this zone change? All right, hearing none, Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. White. Comments on this ordinance by the governing body. Hearing none, madam clerk.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Dr. Emmons.
Yep.
Mr. Escabel.
Aye.
Mr. Labor.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Dr. Rennie.
Yes.
Ordinance is approved on third and final reading.
Number ten ordinance, second reading, amending sections one point four point three, one point four point four, five point one point four, five point seven point ten, and five point eight point two of the Unified Development Code to define recreational vehicle parks and campgrounds, designate zone districts for their operation, create specific use standards for recreational vehicle parks, campgrounds, and revise manufactured home and park regulations as necessary.
All right, before today, we have a U D C amendment to regulate R V parks and campgrounds. Did anybody come here today to speak to this? If you do, please come forward. Hearing none, Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Ma- Mayor, the motion to approve on second reading failed at the Public Services Committee, therefore there is no recommendation. However, for the second discussion, I move to approve on the second reading.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Emmons. Comments for members of the governing body. Dr. Emmons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to first of all thank Mr. Bloom for his help with this ordinance. As the director of the Cheyenne Laramie County Health Department, I went through and, and with a fine-tooth comb and looked at this document compared to the requirements for health, the health department. And after visiting with Mr. Bloom, I think we got everything lined up the way it should be, and I feel very confident with the way these rules are written now, or this ordinance is written now, that it will do. It'll meet the purpose that we were striving to meet. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor, through you, a question for Mr. Bloom. Um, Mr. Bloom, in the first paragraph, it says the substitute is based on discussion that occurred at the November twentieth, twenty twenty-five committee meeting and then at, and a meeting on November twenty-second, twenty twenty-five? I'm assuming that's just a typo.
I'm guessing that was October.
That's what I thought.
Mayor, members of council, Paul's Bloom, planning and development director, that is correct. That is a, is a typo. I was optimistic with the year ending soon.
Thank you. I was a little concerned because I saw it the month and I hadn't gotten my turkey yet, so.
Understood. Dr. Aldrich.
Uh, Mayor Collins, through you, I was just curious about the item that is on page two of three that says each recreational vehicle's can each have water, sewer, and thirty amp and fifty amp electrical service available for connection at individual recreational vehicle sites. Um, I know we had talked about electricity so that people would not be running generators. Um, is it necessary to have both the thirty amp and the fifty amp? Or is that just a precaution?
Mayor, through, through you to Dr. Aldrich, um, what is standard in most all of the R V parks that we have nowadays is those two connections. Your thirty amp connection is for your smaller trailers and smaller R Vs. Your larger ones that do show up on site, they do require a fifty amp, so that thirty and fifty is standard. Whenever you go to those sites, you flip open the box, you'll see both of those. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
And I guess we will look at this amendment during the next committee meeting, but you wanted to give the committee an opportunity to read it before the committee happened. Yep.
I have a question.
Doctor. Yes.
So, I guess I listened to the committee this afternoon, and one of your comments, Director Bloom, was that the planning commission would remove the requirement for one acre minimum site, and yet, when I'm looking at page twenty-eight of thirty-one of, of our materials, it refers to table five dash six, which I assume is from our U D C. It says the minimum total area would be five acres, so are we, I assume you're talking two different things, but can you clarify that?
Mr. Bloom.
Mayor, through you to Dr. Rennie. Uh, that's a great point. This ordinance is looking at multiple sections of code. The code that is referencing the five acre minimum, that is specifically for manufactured home parks. So the recreational vehicle parks and campgrounds, those do not have a minimum. The planning commission's desire was to essentially let the market drive those and the development standards because they will construct one that will be profitable.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else?
I have one more question.
Dr. Aldrich.
I'm sorry, Mayor Collins, through you. On the data plate that's to be affixed to each house placed in a park or a portion of a park, developed after the adoption of this code, is there anywhere, I don't remember seeing this in the original document that shared with us before the committee meeting, is there anywhere that it tells what data has to be specifically on that data plate?
Mr. Bloom.
Mayor, through you to Dr. Aldrich. Um, that, that data plate requirement is one that was in the previous, uh, manufactured home park code, and we just carried it over. That is a data plate that is provided by, by HUD, that is a fix at the time of manufactured, and that has the year, the serial number, or the VIN, whatever the applicable number is, and that's what's on that plate.
Great, thank you.
Other questions for staff? All right, hearing none. Any other comments? All right, we're on second reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ordinance, the ordinance is approved on second reading with Dr. Rennie and Mr. Labor voting no.
Next items, number eleven, resolution approving the Bell Building Urban Renewal Project and the Bell Building Urban Renewal Plan pursuant to Wyoming statute fifteen dash nine dash one ten.
All right, we have a developer's request to approve a plan and project to be able to access U R A tools. Is there anybody here in the audience that would like to speak to this resolution before us? Mr. Dam, welcome.
Thank you, Amy Surdam, um, one of the owners of the Bell Building. I'd just like to give a little bit of overview about the project so far and bring us all up to speed. Um, the building was built in nineteen thirteen as originally as a Buick car dealership. There was an elevator system in the building even back there, taking the cars up to the second and third floors. After that, it was a parking garage for the Plains Hotel, and then in the nineteen fifties was turned into office space, at which time the roof was removed and elevated and a fourth floor was added to the building. It became vacant in around the nineteen eighties, and it's been vacant since then. The previous owner did, um, work with the city on some Brownsville grant funding to mothball the building and put a new roof on the building, so that work was done prior to our ownership. Last year, to remove the overt light on the block and help our neighbors, we invested four hundred thousand dollars of our own funds, along with fifty thousand dollars of the D D A funds and fifty thousand dollars of the Joint Powers Board funds to re-renovate the facade and put new windows on the building and make it secure. Prior to that, there had been water intrusion, pigeon intrusion, and vandalism. So we wanted the building to be secure, to preserve the structure as much as possible as we move to the next phase of development. Also, at that time, we applied for historic tax credits and were tentatively awarded those, which means our five-year stopwatch has begun, and now we're down to four years remaining to complete the project in its entirety to capitalize on the historic tax credits. It's a very expensive project, and it's nowhere near done. Right now, as it sits, it's a vacant building without any infrastructure whatsoever in it. It's simply three floors, one of which, the fourth floor, is very unstable and will need to be removed prior to any development. The roof will be able to remain in its current position. So our vision for the building is to have a retail space on the first floor, along with utilizing the garage that's there, and the already Y dot approved entry and exit into that garage. There are, has already been a space, a parking space removed on that block for the entry and exit of cars. And cars will go into there, and there will be thirty-two additional parking spaces in that building, repurposing that building to its original use. Those parking spaces can be used by the public for events, for overnight stays at the Plain Hotel, um, for people who work downtown, people who eat or shop downtown, for people who live downtown. They will be full access to anyone who wants to use them. Um, there, of course, will be a fee for that, as there is with typical parking in a downtown area. Those fees are yet to be determined, but there will be thirty-two spaces. And then on the top floor, there will be five to seven residential lofts. So we'll be adding residential units to the downtown as well, which we're really excited about. Um, the total project cost will be an additional likely six to seven million dollars of investment to get it up to speed, um, and to add the elevator, the utilities, the fire system, and all of the infrastructure necessary to create a safe, usable building and rehab it downtown. We think it's the perfect project for tax increment financing, as we definitely see the economic benefit of rehabbing this building by contributing to the property tax base, the sales tax base, uh, construction workers, um, doing the renovation, and, um, creating more, spurring more redevelopment in the neighboring buildings as well in the neighborhood, and also really a boost to the Plains Hotel and perhaps really helping that hotel succeed in its entirety. So we're really excited to, um, participate in this redevelopment. It's a project I've been watching and working on for quite a while, and, um, really hope that we can gain your support in its entirety for TIF financing. My understanding is if you approve, um, the tax increment financing today, that the next step will be to have a third-party reviewer analyze the costs and the performance, um, the P and Ls and our, um, performer of the building, and then we will come back to you with a development agreement and the costs that we feel should be possibly included in the TIF financing, and at that point, you'll get to vote on whether, um, it's just the utilities or the safety features, or if the parking, um, can be a piece of that or not at that point. Um, there may be enough renovation costs without the parking that we don't need to go into a belabored discussion about the parking anytime, but, um, it is part of the building, and we'll see if, if it's, um, if that piece can be approved at some point or not, or if that's even a necessary discussion at some point or not. But I think today's point is just to say, do you think that this is, um, worthy of TIF dollars? And if so, we, um, appreciate your consideration and your time. And I may stand for any questions.
Thank you, Amy. Anybody have questions for Dr. Emmons?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, two things. I wanted to fill in a history piece for you. Um, when I moved to Cheyenne in nineteen eighty-six, the community action of Laramie County's offices was in that building on the second floor.
Perfect.
So.
Thank you.
There, it was in bad shape then. Um, my, my question, is it appropriate for me to ask a question about the parking?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I saw that the spaces are, it's about seventy thousand dollars per space. How long do you think it's going to take to actually pay that off? Um, to help, I was trying to figure out how much it would cost about for a part a monthly parking space.
Well, um, I do want to point out, and Megan, our architect, is on the phone, that normally a parking space, when you build just any parking, is around sixty to a hundred thousand dollars as well. So it's in line with the cost of normal parking, um, and also it will depend on the demand for the spaces and the use. So obviously, um, if there's more demand for hourly or overnight, parking will shift the model to facilitate more of that. There's a bigger R O I for us with the hourly and the overnight parking than the long-term monthly parking, for sure, um, but we do want to have a mix of those available, and I mean, our performance stretches out for thirty years as with any, or twenty-five years as with any commercial loan, so.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Um, with the parking, how many apartments do you plan on having if this were to pass?
She testified five to seven.
Five to seven. Follow, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think, Mr. Mayor, through you. Um, do you have an agreement with the Plains Hotel to use this for the parking?
We, we don't have a agreement, but we have had conversations with the Plains and other surrounding retailers who have all expressed interest in utilizing the parking and long-term leasing some of them for their, for their use. If, if that becomes evident or not, it, we just felt it was a little premature to enter into negotiations without knowing if we would be able to complete the fina- uh, project financially.
Mr. Moody, follow.
Thank you, ma'am. No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins, through you. Um, well, thank you for your presentation and for always for the information. I was wondering, um, if we know what the current property tax is on that property and what, um, if you may, if you happen to know what the anticipated property tax would be, um, when it's, um, completely renovated, because I think that's really, in my mind, that's really what the public is probably interested in, is how much, um, revenue are we looking at going that eventually, because I know that a TIF lasts usually twenty-five years, so we'll be locked into that tax rate or that tax base for twenty-five years, but then what could we anticipate? Um, and it's hard to project twenty-five years out, but if you kind of know any, any of those numbers, that'd be really helpful.
Mr. Dam, what's your crystal ball tell you?
Um, I believe I included that in our original report that, um, over the twenty-five years, it would be the tax increment would be around nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars is what we recalculated recently. Um, so nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I mean, I, I have every reason to believe that the building will be worth the funds put into it, plus the appreciation after that time.
Mr. Surdam, do you know the current, uh, property taxes? What is it?
Three thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars and ten cents for twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Did you get that, Dr. Aldrich?
I did, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
It's good to see you. Anybody else came today to speak to this? Ms. Volk, welcome.
Uh, Wendy Volk, four thousand Bent Avenue. I'm also on the Downtown Development Authority Board, and I just want to say that we were very proud of the Surdams and what they have done with the Bell Building. Um, I applaud as a real estate agent, um, the efforts she and her husband and the vision they have for this building and what they have done for our downtown has been tremendous. So I would like to just, um, encourage your support for this project. We need to take it to the next level, and so we're really pleased that the funds that were granted through the Downtown Development Authority for the windows is something I was very pleased to go and tour the building, but I realize it's still a big lift, so I welcome your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Anybody else? All right, we'll go to, uh, Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, um, the recommendation of the committee is to adopt, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. White. Comments from members of the governing body. Dr. Emmons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just need to be clear on, um, uh, issue with the TIF. So if we grant this and something happens and the project doesn't go through, we're not out any month. Is that correct?
Mr. Brody Shaken said, no, we're, we are not.
Okay, just wanted to be very clear on that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins, through you. I, um, have historically been opposed to, uh, TIFs, ju- just because I really, um, am concerned that we have a significant number, right now, I believe we're at six or seven, TIFs, and it locks us into a tax rate for, um, a twenty-five year, up to a twenty-five year period. Um, so I have not, um, historically, uh, been in support of those. However, I think that, um, this TIF generating nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars, um, and looking at the propos- the, well, I think we would all, uh, know, uh, assume would be more than that. Um, at the end of the day, if this project is, uh, comes to completion and, um, would be able to, uh, definitely support that nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars, um, I will be voting yes for this this evening, um, and look forward to that documentation that will be, uh, provided, um, after the review is done, um, to see if this is a viable project.
Mr. Labor, did I see you? Did you answer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As, uh, was pointed out by one of my colleagues here, uh, that building was in pretty bad shape many, many decades ago. It was, uh, really needed the rehabilitation that occurred, and I certainly believe that that was well within the intent and the reasoning of the E P A Brownfield Grant. Without that effort, uh, this building wouldn't have a choi- chance. And so when that previous owner did that, it opened up the possibilities, and I want to speak to the question of more parking downtown, private, public, or whatever, is a good thing. It's something that we, that we really need, and I think we've seen, uh, enough lately about downtown parking to understand the downtown that we desire that is a vibrant shopping area and entertainment area, and of course, we're well on our way to doing that. That means more parking and providing it in the building itself for the units, uh, that people are going to be living in is obviously, uh, really what we're looking for. So I understand that there are, as always, uh, projects like this, their questions and trends, I think that that'll be made clear to us with the evaluation that's going to occur, that we're going to be able to thoroughly understand whatever these, uh, technicalities are. So I, uh, I speak very much in favor of this. It's one of the things that, uh, other communities have used successfully. other communities have used successfully. We haven't, I'm not sure all cases are valid, but certainly the two cases that I know of are. So I believe that this is a real addition. And when we look at those additions, we have to understand the difficulty of an older building. And this is a very much an older building. There are a lot of challenges and they have to be overcome. I'm pleased that we have some people here that are willing to look down the road to the future, believe in our downtown and invest not only in the property but in the parking. So I certainly speak in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. We have a resolution before us? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Mr. Moody is a no? The resolution is approved or adopted on? Next item, please.
Number twelve, resolution reappropriating the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget of the City of Cheyenne according to the provisions of Wyoming statutes sixteen dash four dash one twelve and sixteen dash four dash one thirteen.
Right. Is there anybody here today to speak to our reappropriation of our budget? Hearing none, Mr. Leibert?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to adopt, and I so move second.
Seconded by Mr. Escaville. Comments on the reappropriation by the governing body? Mr. Moody?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I know I asked this of Finance Committee, but on a memorandum on page two where it says four hundred and thirty, thirty thousand, thirty thousand three hundred and sixty-seven, six hundred and seventy-six dollars miscellaneous Department Fifteenth Street rail car experience EDA grant match requirement. What is this for with regards to Fifteenth Street project rail cars?
Mr. Cobb, are you the man to answer that question? Thank you, sir.
Mayor, through you to Councilman Moody. The answer, sir, is twofold. It's for
I don't think it's on.
Sorry.
Okay. Can you hear me now, sir?
We can't.
Thank you. Through you to, to Councilman Moody. So the answer is twofold, sir. It's for two purposes, for renovation of the rail cars, for the EDA grant, one City of Cheyenne car, and three EDA cars. And the second item is for transportation of those vehicles back to Fifteenth Street.
Thank you. Followed, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. Other comments? Mr. Leibert?
Mr. Mayor, could I have a review of those rollovers of the police overtime that are included in this?
Would that be best for our treasurer?
Mr. Mayor, through you, a review. So you want me to let you know how much we're rolling over? Is that what you're asking for, Councilman Leibert?
Yes.
Alrighty. So we will be rolling over ninety-four thousand twenty-seven dollars for critical traffic area overtime, eighty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars for noise and speed enforcement overtime, and those are fiscal year twenty-five unspent dollars.
Well, Mr. Mayor, my comment would be, let's spend them. I think that we've, we've begun a process here that has brought results, but we got a lot more to go before our streets are safer to the degree that we seek. So I'm glad to have appropriated that, but I think that let's, let's spend that and see if we need to come up with some more because this is such an important area. Thank you.
Mr. Leibert, I talked to the chiefs today and during the summertime, it's a little difficult sometimes to find officers. But this time of year, there's a lot more officers looking for overtime shifts, and we'll be able to get after that a lot more. So you'll be pleased. Dr. Aldridge?
Sounds good.
Mayor Collins, first and foremost, I want to thank our treasurer for always being responsive. I don't know how deeply our, my colleagues dig into this list, but I dig in fairly deeply. I am, I know that this is a necessary evil, if you will, to reappropriate these funds, but I am continually frustrated by the number of parking tickets that we have that people fail to pay. The number and the individuals who we do business with on a regular basis is the City of Cheyenne, who failed to pay for bills that they owe, whether it be trash pickup, whether it be childcare bills. One of the items, we had an employee that was overpaid seven hundred and eighty-six dollars, I believe it was. And we weren't able to collect that, so now it's going to collection. I just, I think that we, quite honestly, it's, by the time it gets ready to go to collection, it's been, it's been on our books for quite a while. So while I know that this is a necessary evil, and I know we've worked really hard and Robin's office has worked hard to try and find a collection agency who will actually collect something, which would be a remarkable feat. It's extremely frustrating. So I, this evening I will be voting yes, but I always do this with reluctance because I think that this is something, quite honestly, that we have not gotten a good handle on, and we, you know, I happen to have one of my former students on this list with nine hundred dollars in parking tickets. There's someone on the list with thirteen hundred dollars in parking tickets. And we have a scoff law. I don't know what the heck we're doing that we're not enforcing that on these types of individuals. So I would hope that we would pursue those with diligence and aggressively.
Anybody else? Hearing none. We have a motion to second to do a reappropriation of our budget. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? The resolution is adopted.
Number thirteen, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with participating counties, cities, and towns regarding the allocation of impact assistance funds associated with the Chugwater Energy Project application before the Industrial Siting Council.
All right, before us, we have a resolution to allow the city to participate in some of the impact funding. We're not here today to talk about the project itself. That's going to be decided by folks that live north of us and the Industrial Siting Council, but we are here to talk about the MOU. So if anybody wants to talk about the MOU, please come forward. Ma'am, if you'd identify yourself for the record, and did you understand what I just said?
I did.
Thank you, ma'am. Look, welcome to be here.
Thank you. My name is Jill Kaufman, and I am from Platte County, and a group of us have gotten together and did a lot of research on this. And I guess I know things are probably already decided along the way, but I just still just wanted to share with you that there are other things that this project, this company's project are, are being misleading on. One of the things is I encourage you to not participate in the MOU, and the reasoning is is because we're just digging our pockets, digging into our pockets with people's money. This project is eighty percent subsidized from our, from our money. It's all subsidies from the government. We need to be very clear on that. Are we going to continue to go down this road of always asking for money, money, money from the government? Or are we going to be the answer to problems of the people of these counties? There are three counties that are involved, and the three of us of the counties have been working together. We've gone in front of our commissioners, and we've gone in front of our planning and zoning and, and it's all been on deaf ears. It's basically sharing with us that it's already a done deal. The thing that I wanted to encourage you is please think about being the, the stopgap to say, no, we're not going to accept any more subsidies. We're not going to accept any monies from this, this company. And the reasoning being, again, is we already know that this is pseudoscience. Your President of the United States is out there trying to, very strongly trying to get this stuff cleaned up. Now, again, I ask that you take again another look at this. We just had FOIA'd some information from the Department of Environmental Quality and what it is called the Chugwater Energy Project Notice of Deficiency Industrial Siting Council. And I encourage you to, to FOIA this because some of the things that you're being told are very much incorrect. And one example is they told us originally it was a hundred and seven project wind turbine generators. And now in this deficiency, they're saying it's a hundred and fifty. So a lot of these things are just way off and not, and not quite what they're telling.
Ma'am, I would like to hold you back, okay? I understand there might be some challenges with that. What we're talking about here is should the City of Cheyenne ask for some impact fees for the overflow of employees that will come into our community? The decision that you're asking for is only going to be made by the people up north. We have no say in that.
Yeah, I understand that. I was asking you to reconsider accepting the MOU. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Volk?
Thank you, Mayor, Members Council, Wendy Volk, four thousand Bent Avenue. I just recently have been involved with another wind project, and so I just wanted to tell you the document that is the, what Chugwater is looking at is almost twenty-five hundred pages. And I went through twenty-five, almost all twenty-five hundred pages this weekend. I pulled out some pages that might be helpful for you all. May I share that, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Volk, this has to do with the MOU, correct?
It does.
Thank you.
I want to tell you that, you know, should the industrial sightings approve the permit in Cheyenne, in Laramie County is eligible, I am supportive of the MOU for receiving funds. Our community will be impacted by a project of this scale. And I wanted to just share this so that if fellow, you know, members of our community ask you why you voted for the memorandum of understanding, the Chugwater Energy Project is being described as a billion-dollar opportunity for Wyoming, but behind the numbers are very real questions about how this project will affect our community, land, and way of life. The last page breaks down what the number of employees that would be working on this. So starting next year, if I read the report correctly, starting in May of twenty twenty-six, we will see an increase of about a hundred workers coming into the Chugwater area. They're going to need places to live and be able to attend their jobs, and then that's going to quickly increase to about four hundred and fifty employees. So yes, Cheyenne will be impacted, and Laramie County will be impacted. Mostly, I mean, we just need to kind of look at it as not which county and which community, it's southeast Wyoming. If you need a pair of socks in Chugwater, you may or may not be able to get the size of black socks. You may have to go to Wheatland. You may most likely come to get them in Cheyenne, along with groceries and other things. So I do think that of the four hundred and fifty outside workers that are going to be moving through southeast Wyoming, it's going to be a major influx for our town and the surrounding communities. I think it's going to put tremendous pressure on housing and healthcare, schools, and already stretched law enforcement and volunteers and fire services. I think we just need to be mindful, the cumulative effect of this project and the other twenty-two proposed industrial projects coming at Wyoming is significant. So whether you vote for this MOU or against it, I'm in favor. If the project is permitted and approved, absolutely Cheyenne and Laramie County will be impacted. Platte County will be tremendously impacted. If I were working on the job site and I were pregnant and had an early pregnancy challenge like I did with our youngest daughter, there is not a labor and delivery service in Wheatland at their hospital. We would have to find emergency services to come get a worker that might need to be brought to Cheyenne or air evacuated out. We need to really make sure we're thinking through these impacts because there will be a ripple effect. So I am in support. If this project is approved, the memorandum of understanding that, Mr. Mayor, you would be signing, I would be in favor of because there will be a tremendous ripple effect. The report, according to the twenty-five hundred-page sighting report, is they say sixty percent of the workers would be staying in hotels, motels, RV parks, Airbnb's, short-term rentals. There'd be a very small percentage during this twenty-month project of people that would actually buy a house. And so there will be a ripple effect, and I think we just to be, we as a community need to be very cognizant of this could be a ripple effect of a much greater magnitude with all the other projects. It would be a tsunami of impact to southeast Wyoming. We just need to be mindful for, and I just really, really encourage you to take the time to really read these projects and stay involved because it's, it's a bit overwhelming, but I, I think we have a great planning department in our city, in our county level. I think we need to share resources with the rest of southeast Wyoming. They're going to need all the help they can get if this project goes through.
Thanks, Wendy, for being here. Appreciate you. Anybody else? On the MOU? Mr. Leibert?
Mr. Mayor, this item was reviewed under the other items for the agenda on the October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five Finance Committee meeting. There are four provisions of Title II of the C. Colton have been met. Mr. Mayor, the motion to adopt died to a lack of a second at the Finance Committee, therefore there is no recommendation. However, for the sake of discussion, I move to adopt.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Seiggrave. Comments from members of the governing body?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Aldridge?
Mayor Collins through you. I did have an opportunity to watch the recording of the committee meeting this afternoon when this item was, where this item was discussed. And I'm just really concerned that four hundred and sixty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars, which was the number that was shared by the Chief of Staff Ash, as the amount that we're anticipating would, we would be asking for, that that is not going to be sufficient. I know that she mentioned there were over thirty entities that will be receiving this impact money, including everything from Prairie School to Sheriff's Offices and school districts and police departments. I understand that they will also be impacted, but I'm very concerned that four hundred, that amount is not going to even reach or touch the amount that our area is going to be impacted. I know some of that was put forward for fire mitigation resources for assisting the fire departments in those communities with those tall turbines if there were to be a fire. But I am hopeful that you might be able to, or someone could explain how we derived, arrived at that number so that it is on the public record.
I can try to help you with that. I spent a look on with our attorneys today. According to the ISC report, Chugwater and Wheatland have four hundred and seven hotel and RV slots. Over the twenty-month project, the report said that there were maybe thirteen months where there would not be enough living quarters in that area, and those folks would come to another place to live. On average, that would be a hundred and twenty-eight point seven nine people. Their feeling would be that the majority of those would come to Laramie County, to Cheyenne. We have historically, for our industrial siding council projects, used a cost of service. Robin looks at our budget, figures out exactly what does it cost per person to provide the services that we do. And our current cost per service is thirty, excuse me, three thousand and ninety dollars per person. And when they did the math, that came to four hundred and thirty-one dollars and, four hundred and thirty-one dollars, four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, excuse me. And then there's another thirty-three thousand dollars that was asked for by the police, or the fire department for their response and for some equipment they would want to be able to respond to those tall towers for high-angle rescue or things like that. So I believe that would tell you exactly how the, the calculation was made to get to the number of four hundred and sixty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Thank you.
Mr. Brody, did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Moody?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I just had a couple more questions. I did ask that Finance Committee, but these were different. Has staff contacted any of the hotels on Linkaway, like the Hampton, the Fairview, or the Red Line there, or by I-80 with regards to what their capacity is for long-term residency?
John Brody, City Attorney. Councilman Moody, through, through you, Mayor. The answer to your question is no. What the city did when it attempted to come to a number for unmitigated impacts was use the data that was provided in the, that twenty-five hundred-page application that we've been referring to. That application had averages of vacancy rates, so we took the average vacancy rates for all the various places that temporary workers would stay and relied on those numbers when we came up with our, with our estimate. It seemed more consistent if we're going to base. It, 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 it was more consistent basically to rely entirely on the application. It, 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 it was more consistent basically to rely entirely on the application itself. If we're going to rely on some of the data, we might as well rely on all of the data.
Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. And then just looking through a document and see it. This MOU, we're not giving any of our water or sewer for this project, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Dr. Emmets.
Thank you.
I hate when that happens. Okay.
I'm sorry. So, the four hundred thousand dollars, that's just for the city, not for the school districts, not for any of that other, I mean, those other services. Is that correct?
Mr. Brody.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, through you. Yeah, so, um, there, as I think Chief of Staff Ash had mentioned, there's, there's about thirty-five government entities that hypothetically can apply for funding. The city of Cheyenne is just one of those. This would be just for the city of Cheyenne. Um, I think it is worth noting, too, that statutorily, there's about a twelve-million-dollar cap on the amount of money that can be distributed for unmitigated impacts. Based on the conversations we've had with the attorney representing Platte County, we are pretty much at that cap already. So, I guess trying to understand everybody's needs and stay with under, stay within that cap, uh, they've been able to do.
Dr. Emmets.
So, as a follow-up, it would appear to me to be incredibly irresponsible if we don't try to get these resources as we're going to, um, we're going to get costs. So, if we have an opportunity to get the resources to manage those costs, it would seem irresponsible from our point or our level to not take advantage of that. That's just a statement more than a question.
We understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Escabel.
It's through you. I supported it at Finance, and any assistance that we can get down here in Cheyenne would be greatly appreciated. But if this project goes forward, and that's if, the people of Platte and Goshen County should rather have those workers traveling I-25 down to Cheyenne to stay here rather than having a man camp set up, up in those counties. So, uh, having a city of our size here, uh, that close to that project would actually help those counties.
Other comments? Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I do want to thank everybody that traveled here from Platte County, do it. So, I'm going to continue to be a no vote, mainly because I think the money, if it does get approved, hopefully it doesn't, that should go to the people of Platte and Goshen County right there. I actually got to visit the sites and all that. I honestly think they're going to be the more impacted, even though we have that hundred-and-fifty-mile radius in terms of the industrial committee there. I just think it needs to go to them because they're going to be impacted. They need the money more than us. So, I'm looking at it from that perspective. Yes, we might use a vacancy rate of long-term housing. Okay, in terms of workers, but again, we have plenty of hotels. We also have, uh, other recreational sites here, especially one off North College. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? Mr. Labor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm old enough to remember when the Industrial Siding Commission was created and how big projects would come into the state of Wyoming, and there wasn't any sort of mitigation effort to really help those communities that were just exploding. And so, I certainly recognize all the effort that goes into such an application. It is not a, um, guess. It's a a figure that has some justification. But I also remember when the power plant was built up in Wheatland, and that was definitely an impact on us. Certainly, when you look at the cumulative impact of the construction going on around here and all the challenges that come with it, I'm sure glad to see it. I prefer that to the opposite. And the opposite is something that is happening in communities around Wyoming. So, I certainly speak in favor of this. I think that it clearly has reasoning behind it, and that reasoning is valid. And I, we can't really have it both ways where we oppose it and yet support it. I, I think it's very clearly a matter of law to assist our community in dealing with impacts that come with prosperity, I guess you could say. Certainly, there is a lot of money being made here, and I think we ought to be looking at that carefully. And I think we are. So, I speak in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Dr. Aldridge, do you have a comment?
I did. Mayor Collins, thank you. My experience with impact fees started when I was teaching at Rock River High School. And their community was, received impact money, Rock River did, from the Arlington Wind Turbines. And that was what paid for that community to be able to have a preschool for the children in the community. And I just think that at the end of the day, we're elected by our constituents to be fiscal stewards for the city of Cheyenne. And to have this opportunity to be a part of one of the thirty-plus entities that would receive impact fees, knowing that we are going to be impacted. I would argue that, quite honestly, in the twenty-five-hundred-page document, that my experience in living in Carbon County and in different communities around Wyoming that experience a much bigger boom and bust cycle than Cheyenne does, that most people who are coming in as temporary workers are not bringing families, for the most part. Most of them are coming in individually and go home to visit their families on extended weekends and vacations. But with that said, we are going to probably be the most impacted. And I think that there will be definitely a need to answer to voters and our constituents if we walk away from four hundred and thirty, or the four hundred and eighty-seven, forty-eight hundred. Thank you, thousand dollars that we're asking for, which I still think we will probably, will not cover our, all of our expenses and our cost that are associated with this because I think that we will be impacted more than some of our smaller colleagues and communities in the surrounding area. But at the end of the day, our, my constituents at least, expect me to make good fiscal decisions for our community and not to walk away from money that is available to help offset those expenses. So, for that reason, I'll be a yes vote tonight.
Any other comments? Dr. Rain.
Mr. Mayor, it's my understanding, I've read it somewhere in all the documentation, there's about twelve million dollars set aside by the Industrial Siding Council for mitigation of this project. We're asking for three-point-three percent. I agree with my colleagues from Ward Three, because of Cheyenne's size, shopping amenities, I think we're going to have a much larger impact than that three-point-three percent. So, um, again, I, I agree with her. I don't think the four hundred and sixty thousand is going to be enough to mitigate the impacts on Cheyenne. And lastly, I, we could take a stand and say, no, we don't want it. We'll, we'll absorb it. We'll make our citizens pay for it. But the money's going to be spent. If it, it'll go somewhere else if it doesn't come here. And as I said, I think we will, outside of Chugwater, we will probably see the largest impact of the communities or entities involved.
Any other comments? All right, hearing none. We have a motion, a second, to approve the MOU. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Mr. Moody is a no. The resolution is adopted.
Next item is number fourteen A on page three. Professional Services Agreement between the City of Cheyenne and Old Tag for the Delrange Boulevard Traffic Signal Timing Improvements, Yellowstone Road to College Drive Project.
All right. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to us on the improving the timing on our streetlights on Delrange Boulevard? Hearing none, Mr. Labor.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve an amount not to exceed a hundred and sixty-two thousand and three hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and I so move.
Second. The second by Mr. Moody. Comments from members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor, I was wondering if we could get some comments from the engineer's office on the necessity of this expenditure.
He would love to talk about that.
Mayor, ye- yes, I would like to talk about that. That's great. Through you to Councilman Labor, and I would say, Mr. Labor, and this is well overdue. I, I can, in fact, I look back in the records at my office. I can't find the last time this was done, but it's been over ten years. We're, we're, we're going to increase the safety efficiency of the entire system, and this spans from College Drive all the way to Yellowstone Road. So, it's fifteen intersections total. Also, all the signals need to be re-timed. This is for data collection, modeling, and they'll make recommendations to, to me to what improvements that we need done for the system.
Mr. Labor.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I think this speaks to some of the general things we're talking about tonight. More traffic, more traffic, more traffic, and outdated system. So, this is something that it's a significant amount of money. I'm sure it's a significant amount of data. But obviously, if the situation can be improved, it's money well spent. And certainly something that, as a community, we need to be paying attention to these traffic patterns and how they affect us every day. So, um, I, I, I call it off the consent agenda because I think that it's important people understand all the complexity and the differences of our expenditures and why we do certain things like this. So, I think this will be a worthwhile addition and certainly something that it would be great if we could get a significant improvement. I'm not sure how one measures that traveling down the street as we do. But I know that there's a lot of things, if you look back over the years, there's been a lot of change and a lot more traffic. And so, this will be a good thing. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I agree with my colleague from Ward One. I work with him, my other colleague from Ward One. This is one of our goals to have safer streets in the city, and this will be another addition here to accomplishing our goal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins, through you. I'm wondering, that actually calculates out to about ten thousand dollars per intersection. The hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for fifteen intersections. And I'm wondering if the data that we will be receiving from that will be used and extrapolated for other identifying other areas where we might need to work on signal timing improvements. And if we're using that data to triangulate documentation as we work on these improvements around town.
Mr. Cobb.
Mayor, through you to Dr. Aldridge. So, to answer your last question, the answer is y- yes, as a holistic point of view. But however, you'll see coming forward to you, I have another one coming for Pershing itself. So, all the main corridors will have to be done independently, but we can generally use the data that we get from it for safety improvements and such. But specifics with timing are specific to a corridor. That makes sense, ma'am.
Dr. Aldridge, follow up?
One follow-up question, Mayor Collins. If we were to do all of these at one time, would we see any benefit or cost reduction in buying bulk, per se?
Mr. Cobb.
Mayor, through you to Dr. Aldridge. Uh, no, ma'am, I think it would, it would be about the same.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none. All those in favor of the bid, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Professional Services Agreement is approved on, to the next item, please.
Number fifteen A, Consideration of Bid Number S dash three dash twenty-six for an Agreement between the City of Cheyenne and Cheney Landscaping for the High Plains Arboretum Irrigation Project.
All right. Did anybody here today to talk about irrigation on the, the arboretum? Hearing none, Mr. Labor.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to accept a bid in an amount not to exceed two hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars, and I so move.
Seconded by Mr. Moody. Comments from members of the governing body?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins, in looking at this item, I was wondering if you might be able to tell us where, if, if there's been any movement with the Wyoming State Legislature on plans for adopting this as a state park. And I'm wondering how much money we're going to put into this before we decide what the final outcome will be of this piece of property.
Mr. Sanchez, you want to talk about the project? I can speak to the legislative process. The current legislature as it exists does not seem to be interested in taking this on as a state historic site. My hopes would be that we'll be able to revisit that in the future. But in the meantime, we had a little over three million dollars of state money that they gave us to help with the improvements on here. And Mr. Sanchez can answer to that.
Mr. Mayor, Jason Sanchez, Community Reckoning Events. Um, as the mayor stated, we have just a little over three million dollars to make improvements at the arboretum. So, we have done an irrigation design. Tonight, I'm asking for your support for the irrigation install. This install will provide drip tubing and irrigation to about twelve-hundred forty-three trees. Uh, we currently flood irrigate the entire area, and some trees are missed in that method of watering. So, with this drip system, every tree would be watered and watered exactly as many gallons as they, they need. Some trees are more mature, maybe not need as much or more than newer trees. We recently, with your approval, we replaced the roof at the headhouse. We're in design for replacement of the Laugh House and the greenhouse. We have a pre-bid meeting this Friday for those two projects. We have, um, we've done some work with lead and asbestos abatement and another quote coming for that. And I think if we have your approval after we receive our quotes for the Greenhouse and Laugh House project, we will pretty much encumber all three million dollars by the end of the year.
Thank you.
And if we don't encumber it by the end of the year, then we'll have to give that money back to the legislature. Uh, so, we're working very hard to make sure that doesn't happen.
Get encumbered.
It's been a task.
Anybody else for staff? Mr. Moody.
Wanted to comment, I'm sure that the Director Sanchez would back it up that as we're currently doing flood irrigation, it's pretty wasteful of our water resource as well.
Mr. Mayor, and I would also, I would agree with that and say that it's also time-consuming when we have to go water by a truck and a tank to catch the other trees. So, this will also be a reduction in staff's, uh, resources.
Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to comment, my colleague Ward One, uh, still there. When I used to install sprinkler systems and drip line, does save a lot of water, so the law will, we're going to save money and water. And I'll be able to be an a vote. Thank you.
Other comments?
Just the second item that I called off the consent agenda and had to make the motion prior to hearing from the responsible party. So, I think that it's, it's a good idea that items that come off the consent agenda have the staff person, probably the presented in committee, able to, as Mr. Sanchez just ably did, use a quick overview of what the project's all about. So, I think that's a better approach and more in keeping with the concept of public comment. Mr. Sanchez there is not a member of the public. He's a member of the staff that is working diligently on this project. So, I certainly appreciate everything that's been done. I think this is a long-term tremendous benefit to the community. And obviously, encumbering it before the end of the year, this makes sense. So, I hope we can reach some good understanding about these matters as we progress through our meeting, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Any more comments? Hearing none, we have a bid before us. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? This bid is approved.
Next item is sixteen A on page four, voucher report.
Is there anybody in the audience or on this governing body that would have questions about the vouchers? Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. On page seventeen, uh, Mr. Mayor, through your office, it is seven thousand five hundred dollars for the sub-worth contract for EPA five pollution reduction grant. Uh, what is the Wyoming Independent Citizens Coalition, I assume clarification with that group is?
Wyoming Independent Citizens Coalition is a group of local folks who Wyoming Independent Citizens Coalition is a group of uh local folks who um. I'm not sure how to describe WIC. Uh.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I would say that uh WIC is a group of folks who uh either grew up on or uh still live in South Cheyenne. And they meet uh once a month. Um they're actually a a fine group of people who uh represent uh the interests of. Folks in in the southern part of our community, and I have a I the pleasure of, well, I try to get to their monthly meetings, don't always make it. Um but but they're a very forward-thinking group and and uh certainly a credit to to Cheyenne.
Mister Moody.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the vouchers? Thank you, Mister White. All right, next item, please.
Revenue report.
Same item or same thing. Anybody in the uh audience or in the governing body, under governing body, that would like to uh question about the voucher or the revenue report? We're just hoping we have some. All right, next item, please.
Announcement of a public hearing to be held November tenth, twenty twenty-five at six o'clock PM at Laramie County School District Number One Boardroom, twenty-eight ten House Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. And via electronic conference meeting. Should the city municipal building reopen by this date, the meeting will take place in city council chambers at twenty-one oh one O'Neil Avenue. The public hearing is to determine whether compliance of annexation conditions required by Wyoming Statute fifteen dash one dash four oh two exist. For the city initiated annexation of twenty parcels of land totaling roughly thirteen point sixty-four acres comprised of various tracts of land and rights of way. Situate in East Cheyenne, generally located south of Laramie Street, east of Tevert Drive, north of East Lincoln Way and US thirty, and west of Parsons Place. Announcement of a public hearing to be held November tenth, twenty twenty-five at six o'clock PM at the Laramie County School District Number One Boardroom, twenty-eight ten House Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. And via electronic conference meeting. Should the city municipal building reopen by this date, the meeting will take place in city council chambers at twenty-one oh one O'Neil Avenue. The public hearing is to determine whether compliance of annexation conditions required by Wyoming Statute fifteen dash one dash four oh two. Exists for the owner initiated annexation of three parcels of land totaling roughly twenty point forty-one acres located northwest of the intersection of Converse Avenue. And East Carlson Street, other business.
All right, is there anybody here in the audience to speak to us tonight under other business? All right, hearing none. How about from the governing body? Yes, sir. Mister White?
Well, I'll let Mister Escabel go first.
I was just gonna give a shout out to our downtown. If you were out and about Friday night or Saturday afternoon, uh downtown was really hopping. We had the pub crawl Friday night. And all our bars and restaurants were packed Saturday afternoon at the trunk or treat. Uh for the DDA district. Every street was lined with children and adults in costumes, and it was something to see. Enjoyed taking my grandson down there and uh just about every business almost ran out of candy. So. Yeah, it was really something to see.
Packed.
Thank you, adult costume.
Yeah.
Say that again. There was a whole Wizard of Oz thing. Nothing.
Mister White.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Well, Mister Escabel uh kind of commented on what I was gonna um say, but thank you to the. Downtown develop uh Cheyenne Downtown Foundation as well as the DDA for uh providing funding support for uh all the trunk or treat events. Um and then there's still a couple more to go. I think the police is having one um this Wednesday. So um. Kids don't have to earn the candy like we used to. Uh the second, uh the last thing I wanted to do, and I just wanted to, at the risk of embarrassing her, Pete and I just really wanted. Uh Councilman Labor and myself really want to thank Jen, our admin, for uh all the help she's given us. Um we have thirteen interviews to sit through over the next couple of days to uh. Engage in the unenviable task of trying to fill our 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 late colleague's seat. And uh Jen's just been invaluable throughout the process, and I just wanted to embarrass her tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Doctor Aldridge, did you have something?
I did not.
Mister Labor? Nope. Anybody else? Thank you all for being here tonight. We're adjourned.